Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes and the agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. The Kent County Butler School's Board of Education members this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Adam Constance, legal counsel, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-305b to discuss the following. Section 3-305b, section one, the topic is applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matter. The reason for closed session discussion, public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive, personal, and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. Excuse me. 3-305b nine, the topic is discussion of ongoing negotiations with KCPS bargaining units. The reason for closed session is to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. Section eight under 3-305b to consult with legal counsel and/or consultants to obtain updates and advice regarding pending or potential litigation. The reason for closed session discussion of this topic is a substance of discussions protected by attorney-client privilege. And we'll also move under 3-103a1i, administrative function reviewing findings and recommendations of ethics panel in response to complaint administration of ethics policy procedure in response to ethics panel's findings and recommendations. Excuse me. The reason for closed session discussion of this topic, is substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to 3-104. We are looking for a motion to move into closed session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Dorsey. Ms. Sullivan has the motion, Ms. Dorsey has the second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. We will be returning back into open session at approximately 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Monday, August 14, 2023, Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Open Session Meeting. We are in a little different space. The other room was extremely hot with no air conditioning, so we thought we would help you and help us to be a little bit more comfortable this evening. So welcome to the second open session of the evening. The first item on the agenda in session three A is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Couch as superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen supervisor of human resources, Adam Constance legal counsel, and Gail Manley executive assistant to the superintendent met in closed session under general provisions Article 3-305B. Section one was to discuss applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matters. The reason for a closed session discussion on this topic, public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information, could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive personal biographical information. Personnel information is sensitive personal biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under MPIA. Section nine, under three dash three zero five B, to discuss, the discussion of ongoing negotiations with KCPS bargaining units. The reason for closed session discussion is to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. Section eight, the topic was to consult with legal counsel and/or consultants to obtain updates and advice regarding pending or potential litigation. The reason for closed session with substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. And the last section, three dash one zero three A one I, the topic was an administrative function, review findings and recommendations of ethics panel in response to complaint, and administration of ethics policy procedure in response to ethics panel findings and recommendations. The reason for closed session discussion of the topic, substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of Open Meetings Act, but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to three dash one zero four. In closed session, because it was an administrative function, we did take action. That action was to accept a resolution to adopt the ethics panel opinion and recommendation, and as we typically do, we would read this into public, and I will do so right now. Whereas the Kent County Board of Education, the board maintains ethics policy BBF and ethics procedure number seven hundred dash four in accordance with the Maryland Public Ethics Law, see Maryland Code annotated, general provision five dash one zero one, Comar nineteen A zero one zero one zero zero. Whereas among the purposes of the public ethics law is to avoid improper influence or even the appearance of improper influence, to require public officials to meet minimum standards of ethical conduct, and to prohibit public officials from intentionally using the prestige of office or public position for the gain of that official or another. Whereas pursuant to procedure number seven hundred dash four, the ethics panel of the board is authorized to review complaints alleging violations of the board's ethics policy BBF. Whereas procedure number seven hundred dash four H provides that if a complaint is not dismissed by the ethics panel, the panel will review the complaint and make a determination as to the merits of the complaint. And as part of its review, the ethics panel will review any relevant documents here from the complainant, respondent, and any relevant witnesses and make a determination based on the preponderance of the evidence. Whereas procedure seven hundred dash four H provides that all determination, or determinations of the ethic panel, ethics panel will refer to the Board of Education for action. Whereas an ethics complaint was filed against board member Frank Rhodes on April 12, 2023, alleging three violations of the board's ethics policy. One, that Mr. Rhodes attempted to inappropriately influence the award of the annual Teacher of the Year recognition. Two, that Mr. Rhodes attempted to inappropriately influence the hiring of a prospective job candidate. And three, that Mr. Rhodes discussed confidential litigation matters with opposing counsel litigation versus the school system. Whereas the ethics panel convened on June 15, 2023, to conduct a hearing on the complaint, during which Mr. Rhodes was represented by counsel and had the opportunity to respond to the allegations raised in the complaint. Whereas the ethics panel issued its opinion and recommendation to the Board of Education, the opinion and recommendation dated June 23, 2023, in which it made the following findings of fact. One, with respect to Teacher of the Year selection, Mr. Rhodes did not deny the facts asserted in the complaint and did profess to not fully understand and appreciate that a board member attempting to assume inactive and direct involvement in decisions within the duty and responsibility of an employee of the school system could be construed as inappropriate pressure on the employees exceeding the statutory authority of a board member interfering with the statutory duties of the superintendent. Two, board member involvement in hiring decision, Mr. Rhodes expressed interest in being personally involved in the interview and hiring process for the open position of supervisor of student services, and after being informed that any questions or concerns should be directed to the superintendent Couch, and that board involvement in personnel hiring decisions was inappropriate, Mr. Rhodes nonetheless continued to express preference for a particular candidate for the position. Three, Mr. Rhodes' interaction with opposing counsel in a case adverse to the school system, Mr. Rhodes denied making any disclosure of confidential information to the plaintiff's lawyer, but did not deny being a friend and supporter of the plaintiff. The ethics panel noted the potential appearance of impropriety that might result from a board member publicly meeting with a former KCPS employee who is a plaintiff in civil litigation adverse to the KCPS system employees. Whereas, the ethics panel, in its opinion and recommendation, made the following conclusion of fact and law, conclusions of fact and law. One, Teacher of the Year selection and board member involvement in hiring decisions, allegations one and two, the ethics panel, by unanimous agreement, determined that in the matter, matters of the Teacher of the Year contact and the efforts to influence the hiring decision for an open position by direct conduct with, conduct, excuse me, contact with the HR supervisor, Mr. Rhodes acted inappropriately, exceeding his statutory authority as a board member in an effort to involve himself in the day-to-day administrative decisions of a KCPS employee. The ethics panel concluded that in these two instances, Mr. Rhodes violated the spirit and intent of the ethics policy, insofar as the county board authority does not extend to the day-to-day operations of a school system, and that is the responsibility of the local superintendent. Two, Mr. Rhodes' interaction with opposing counsel in a case adverse to the school system, allegation three, with regard to the concerns expressed about Mr. Rhodes' activities at the Circuit Court on April 11, 2023, the ethics panel unanimously concludes that the complaint failed to adequately establish that Mr. Rhodes acted unethically or inappropriately, and at worst, the ethics panel noted the potential appearance of impropriety to third parties of such behavior given Mr. Rhodes' position as a board member. Three, for the reasons stated in the opinion and recommendation, the ethics panel recommends to the board that it accepts the findings of fact contained in its opinion and adopted the conclusion that for the reasons detailed above, Mr. Rhodes acted inappropriately in his multiple personal communications with a KCPS employee, and recommends that the board direct Mr. Rhodes to refrain, refrain in the future from any further such activities, citing boroughs, various Prince George's County Board, excuse me, Board of Education, MSBE OP number eleven dash twenty-three, 2011. Four, the ethics panel recommends that the board dismiss the ethical complaint related to Mr. Rhodes' public activity on April 11, 2023, outside of the Circuit Court for Kent County. Whereas the board has carefully considered the opinion and recommendations of the ethics panel has provided Mr. Rhodes with notice and an opportunity to be heard, both in hearing before the ethics panel, before the board in its review of the ethics panel opinion and recommendations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board accepts the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the opinion and recommendation of the ethics panel with regard to the ethics complaint filed against Mr. Rhodes and finds as follows. One, Mr. Rhodes acted inappropriately by using his prestigious office to attempt to improperly influence the Teacher of the Year's selection. Two, Mr. Rhodes acted inappropriately by using his prestigious office to attempt to improperly influence the hiring decision for the position of supervisor of student services. Three, Mr. Rhodes is directed to refrain in the future from engaging in activities using his prestigious office to attempt and inappropriately influence an administrative decision and exceeding the statutory scope of his authority as a board member to involve himself in the day-to-day administrative decisions of a KCPS employee. Four, the board dismisses the complaint related to Mr. Rhodes' interaction with opposing counsel in case adverse to the school system, dated August 14, 2003, approved by a vote of four to one. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Messing.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. I should have told you the flag was back there and not up here, so I apologize for that. Okay, we are going to move on to the next portion, the approval of minutes for the July 10, 2003, open session meeting. The administration is recommending approval of the minutes as presented from the July 10, 2023, open session meeting. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Messing?
Aye.
We have an aye down there. Motion passes, is approved. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gail?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Couch, superintendent's report.
Okay. Wanted to inform you that we had a presentation to District 36 delegation to bring forward legislation that would change the cost share ratio from the state to fund the construction of a new middle school. That meeting was very successful. They agreed to work towards carrying the legislation forward, and what we did was we looked at other school systems that have 100% of their schools identified as community eligibility provisional schools. And when we took the average of those school systems, the average state cost share for all of their construction projects was 98%. So it was agreed that the delegation would work with us to try to get the state to pay for 98% of the construction costs of the new middle school. So that was really good news. Now, we're going to have to work it hard, and we know that we may not be successful this first go-around, but the good news is the IAC, who oversees all of the public school construction projects, knows that we are going forward to request legislation, and they are also supportive. So it helps to have them on the same page as us. When we came out of our meeting with the delegation and prior to our presentation to the county commissioners on the update for the feasibility study for KCMS, the county commissioners were asked if they would have enough funding to support the project if 98% was paid for by the state, and they said yes. So I think we all felt really good about the meeting as a whole, because I think that was some, some positive feedback for us as a school system, that the county commissioners obviously do support the program or the, the project, but we are all concerned about funding. So we'll continue to work towards that, and I think no one disagrees that the middle school does not need to be replaced in some form fashion. A survey is out for the parents to vote on their preferred location for the new construction, for the construction of a new Kent County Middle School. That survey went out to the families last week, and today, I checked today, and we have a third, 137 responses so far, and the survey closes on September the first. So we'll do some more pitch and more recommendations, and we're not putting it out on social media because it's only open to the parents. So we sent it by email, robocall, and text messages. So we'll send out another notice to remind them that they should submit the response on the survey. The new school year, it's hard to believe, but the new school year is almost here. New teachers begin on the 22nd, and our 10-month staff report to work on the 28th. Students begin as follows. Grades one through six and grade nine, they begin on Tuesday, September the 5th. Grades one through 12 are in session on Wednesday, September the 6th, and pre-K and K, their first day is Thursday, September the 7th. So that's, boy, it's just real important. I wanted to report briefly about two really important grants that the school system received. The first one is our teacher collaborative grant, which is going to provide us some dollars to do a lot of work with the career ladder. We were one of three school systems that received this grant. This was a huge feather in our cap, because three grants for the entire state of Maryland is pretty significant for us. It totals about $1.4 million. It's a grant for three years, and it was a competitive grant. Kent County is the only school system on the eastern shore to be awarded this grant. The grant focuses on piloting aspects of the career ladder, a three-year professional development series on culturally responsive teaching practices that allows our teachers and our administrators to be trained. And the grant will also allow KCPS to continue supporting the aspiring teachers through the Grow Your Own collaborative through the state. So we were very excited about that. The other grant that I was really happy that we received was the Stronger Connections Grant. That was, that grant totals $1.3 million, a little over $1.3 million. It's for three years, and it provides funding for us to hire two social workers, one at the high school and one at Kent County Middle School, and then a full-time behavior intervention is at Kent County Middle School. So this will provide some additional supports for the middle school to address some of the concerns that we noted last year. And last, the other grant that I reported on briefly at the last board meeting, but just wanted to reiterate, we received the Judy Center Expansion Grant for Galena Elementary. That totals $330,000 annually, and it allows us to open up a Judy Center at Galena Elementary and have a lot of outreach for our ELL students and their families that don't speak English. So that's going to be a huge support for Galena. And finally, I just wanted to thank Bill Poore and Dan Davilio for spending their day setting this up, because we had a problem with the AC in the boardroom, and so until we get that resolved, there's no air flowing in the boardroom. So this is it for them.
And we are live streaming too, so we have all of the equipment has been set up and good to go.
Right. That's why they spent the day moving everything from there to here and, and piecemealing stuff together. So thank you for setting things up.
Thank you for that, Ms.
I know that was not your, that wasn't a plan for your day today, but I thank you very much for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Couch. The next item in the superintendent's report is the ratification of the 2023-2024 Administrative and Supervisory Negotiated Agreement.
Thank you, President Gads, Dr. Couch, school board members. Tonight, I bring forth for your approval, the 2023-2024 Kent County Admin and Supervisor Association Negotiated Agreement. This agreement starts with a one-step increase and a 3% COLA retroactive to July 1, 2023. With that said, the administration recommends the approval of the 2023-2024 agreement between the Kent County Admin and Supervisor Association and the Kent County Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Hushen. As, as Mr. Hushen mentioned, the administration is recommending approval of the 2023-2024 Agreement between the Kent County Administrator and Supervisor Association, known as KCASA, and the Kent County Board of Education. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Ms. McGee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you.
President Gads, if it's all right with you, we do have the Admin Supervisor Association President and negotiating team that can actually come up and sign the conference.
Yes.
We'll bring it up to you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is personnel actions. Mr. Hushen, you are up to bat again.
Thank you, President Gads, Dr. Dabs, school board members. Each month, the board receives a report of stated personnel actions, excuse me. Those actions are discussed in closed session and then a vote is held here in open session. With that said, the administration recommends approval of those stated personnel actions.
As Mr. Hushen noted, the administration is asking for a motion to approve the stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Dorsey. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is for discussion. Ms. Messing, can we start with you?
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I attended the MABE New Student Member Orientation on August 3rd, and it was a really great experience, and I'm so thankful to have learned so much. And it was a really great way to learn how to achieve success for this position, and I got to meet all of my other students. Various clubs and sports held fundraisers for the county this month, such as car washes and stands at the fair and festivals. And then just a reminder to look out for open house and back to school night gate.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Sullivan?
The CAC held their first meeting with our new members, Ms. Maddie, of course. We went over the meeting procedures, and everybody introduced themselves, and we've created a meeting schedule for the year, which can be found on the Citizens Advisory Committee page on the KCPS website. And the next meeting of the CAC will be on Monday, October 16th. Also want to mention, school supply lists are up on the KCPS website, and just to remind you, it's tax-free week in Maryland, so it's a good time to go and get those supplies. And a reminder that our elementary schools, that's Galena, Garnet, and Rock Hall, will be starting 15 minutes earlier this year. So schools will open at 8:35 a.m., classes will start at 9 a.m., dismissal of walkers and car riders will be at 3:25 p.m., and bus riders at 3:40 p.m. This will also affect delays and early dismissals, so please be sure to check the KCPS website for all those exact times. This upcoming weekend is the annual Legacy Day Weekend in Chestertown, and this year's theme is the celebration of 10 years of Legacy Day. There will be a genealogy workshop, parade, receptions, food and craft vendors, a gospel concert, and dancing on the street. There will also be an exhibit at the Boardly Center commemorating the 10-year anniversary, as well as an exhibit of African-American artists provided by Peaceful World Enterprises at River Arts. And I want to say thank you to Sumner Hall and Kent County Historical Society for this great event, and congratulations to Air Lee Johnson for being this year's honor raise, which is a well-deserved recognition. Also, if you haven't heard, 90.5 WKHS is getting ready to celebrate its 50th anniversary, and they're planning a big event next year, so look out for more information on that on the KCPS website and the WKHS Facebook page. This is a big transition year in my house for my kids. I have one going into middle school and one going into high school, so we're excited for them and for this new chapter. I hope everybody enjoys the remainder of the summer. I can't believe it's coming to an end already, and I wish everybody a wonderful start to the new year, and it's never too early to join the PTA. Please get in touch with your school, your principal, other parents, and please sign up for the PTA. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, I have a few things I'd like to say. First of all, what this board has done to me through the, some of the people that are involved, I don't agree with, but that's my own opinion, okay? I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to get a job done. I want our school to improve. I know everyone does, but it's been like this for years and years, and it just goes on. We get the same old grades. Dr. Couch, I want action. You're a very smart person. You should be able to do something. Everyone on this board should do something, and we're not going in an upward trajectory, and that's what I want. Furthermore, what you said about the people that I discussed that want to get, you know, that were good people, there's like, there's not many people that go over these discussions. It's just like, it's just like it happens. I don't think it's done right. That's my opinion. I talked to some of the people. I thought they were really good people, and the person I discussed with didn't even give me the advice. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into that. Okay, so also, I think this is a good old person society. I'm tired of how things are run, and I can't do it myself. There's just no way, but I'm gonna keep pushing. I want change, okay? I want big change in our school system. I want our grades to go up. We should be able to be number one in the state of Maryland, but now we're down near the bottom. I know, Dr. Couch, and the board is trying to do stuff, but I'm not seeing it happen. And money. Do you think money's gonna solve this problem? We have Kerwin coming in. We want money for a new school, and our grading is still just as bad, okay? I don't think money's gonna solve the problem. I think we need to do something drastic. I think we need major change. Now, I know that in our country, like especially in Maryland, Maryland controls the whole school board system. They control everything, okay? They even wanted to take over our system. The head of the superintendent wanted to take over the school boards. Maryland, I don't think is doing their job. So if I'm gonna sit here and fight with the school board, who else do I fight with? I want change. Does anyone in this room understand what I'm saying? I want change. And I also think this is a system of fear, in my opinion. You can't even go around and, I feel like if I talk to anyone, oh my gosh, it'll be reported to someone, and I'm gonna get in trouble. I want to be able to talk to people. I want to have conversations, and I don't want to be put down, and people ganging up, and that's the way I think. I came in here to make change, and I don't think it's happening. So getting back to our Maryland government, you know, it was said years and years ago when the National School Board came, and they're gonna slowly take over, and then it was saying that the state's gonna take all the money and give it to the school system. And now they want the different communities to cough up the money, or they're not gonna pay for it. Something is just not right. We are not getting anywhere. I want change. That's all I'm trying to say. If you don't understand what I'm saying, that's fine, and Dr., our superintendent, I want change, and I know you can do it. You're smart. You're a smart person. How come we're in the same rut that we've been in for so many? I've only been on here six or seven months, and I'm seeing in-between the lines. It's like everything has to be the same old way. We need big, big change, and that's all I'm trying to say. Now, I know I'm not making friends. That's fine. I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to get a job done. So if you don't like what I'm saying, that's fine. And Dr., our superintendent, I want change, and I know you can do it. You're smart. You're a smart person. How come we're in the same rut that we've been in for so many? I've only been on here six or seven months, and I'm seeing in-between the lines. It's like everything has to be the same old way. We need big, big change, and that's all I'm trying to say. Now, I know I'm not making friends. That's fine. I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to get a job done. So if you don't like what I'm saying, that's fine. We have a lot of good employees at this school, a lot of people that really work hard, and hopefully they're gonna get recognized. That's all I can say because I don't like to see, I don't like what's going on in our system right now. That's just me. So I think Kerwin's gonna bring all this money in. I hope we get, I hope it works. I hope we get the job done. I hope everyone in the school system, and especially our great teachers, will know that they've got support because I want it to happen. I want, and, Dr. Couch, I want to talk to teachers. You won't even let me talk to anyone. I gotta talk to you about everything. It's like if I want to, I gotta get permission to do this. I gotta get permission to do that. I'm a businessman. The way you're running things around here, in my opinion, is not going the way it should be. And everyone else, you can all listen to me. I want the change. I want you to do something. You're in charge of this ship. You need to do something. We need our kids to learn, and I don't want to hear it's poverty. That's a poverty or whatever. You, you have the ability to make change unless you're being controlled by the head of MAVE. I don't know, and that's all I have to say. Now, one last thing. I'd like to make a, I'd like to find out what it would be involved to get some nice letters put at the high school. You think that's funny? I want to, I'd like to get KCHS put on the high school, or maybe the big logo of our symbol, because I think that high school looks great. I think it looks, it's wonderful. It's nice-looking, and we need to really support what's going on out there, and I think the lady that's in charge out there has done a great job. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, I wanted to, I went to the meeting at the commissioners on last week, on a Tuesday, and was discussing about the new middle school. I was really enlightened. I really kind of had another outlook when I went there and saw that they were concerned about, you know, wanting to do some things, and they're gonna try really hard, you know, to try to make everything work out. I know that we're a county, and we don't have much money, but the only way that we're going to make everything work the way it needs to for our kids is to work together. And I think that's the biggest thing to be truthful. Along with, we have different issues that has come about as far as in Kent County, but the foundational piece of it all is we have to work together. And that's the one thing that, that's kind of like we lost the roof. If we would come back together as teachers, parents, administrative staff, community, I believe that we can solve a whole lot of the issues that we have, you know? A lot of things have been left on just one group of people, you know? Fingers being pointed, is this person's fault or that person's fault? We all just need to stop pointing fingers and work together and come together and try to get these problems solved, you know? And also, the other thing is, in everything that we can see, we're always gonna have something that we can point out there and say, oh, that's terrible. In the midst of it, something you may not see is something is being fixed, you know? But if we work together, we'll see it even worse out. And, and I'm just looking forward to this next year that, you know, we will see improvements that will continue to, to happen. And as far as Kerwin, it is an expensive price on it. And I guess not about the money that I see it's going to be helpful towards. What I see is what they're offering and the different things that they are offering to our children. The tutoring, these are the foundational pieces that we need so our children will score higher or will have better grades. So I'm just looking forward to it as a mother and a grandmother, you know, as a person of the community. I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing that in Kent County, and I'm looking forward to working with the board to do whatever we do that is in our power to do. And I hope that we will continue to have the support of the community while we do this and stop pointing fingers. But come out, show your support at the schools, show your support here. I didn't come here thinking I could do it by myself, and then I got here and I really found out, okay? So I'm just here to work and do whatever I can from my heart. You have my heart. So.
Ms. McGee?
We, four of us were able to make last Tuesday's meeting with the county commissioners and the District 36 delegation. The commissioner, Mr. Gatz, the last minute was called out. The District 36 delegation had an interesting take on Kerwin. There's been a lot of across-the-state hand-wring about the funding. It's just not Kent County. Every county's having that problem, and our delegates thought that they might see, they called it Kerwin Lite, that jurisdictions are just not going to be able to roll out and fund 100% of the Kerwin requirements right off the bat. So it probably will be implemented in stages. You know, we're fortunate that we're already doing, I keep coming back to like the pre-K, universal pre-K, we're already doing that, which might buy us some time while other school districts are getting that in line. That'll give us a couple more years to get some of our other stuff. I thought the presentation, I mean, we all have sat through that presentation. We probably all could do it ourselves now, but it was sort of an eye-opener, I think, for the commissioners, and the takeaway, I think, I think Mr. Fitton said it best, was they'll support no matter where it goes. We need to figure out the funding. They, to them, the location is secondary. We've got to figure out how to fund it, and if we could get this percentage way up to somewhere between 94 and 98, I mean, they threw out a figure, I mean, believe it or not, it would be one or $2 million.
About 1.9 million.
I mean, that is really a drop in the bucket, and matter of fact, Commissioner Price said, we could fund that right, and we could write you that check right now, so let's all, you know, the power of positive thinking, maybe that that will help. It really is, in my mind, indefensible that as a county that is as strapped, because of the demographics and the high poverty, that we're required to pay 50% of any capital improvement where you've got Somerset, the state paid 100% of their new construction. It's just not fair. So let's be optimistic that maybe we will get a fortuitous bounce over there in Annapolis. I'm curious, Dr. Couch, we approved a whole bunch of personnel. Where are we in terms of, how many more vacancies do we need to fill before school starts, if you pull the hard figure?
I think we have about two or three positions.
Okay. And, you know, it's hard to believe, but the next time we meet, we will have already had school. So I'm looking forward to the next year. I mean, we've got new leadership to middle school, which I think is exciting. I think everybody's optimistic going into that year, the year with that leadership, and hopefully, one of the things that I'm hoping will, sort of organic with the middle school, that will help move forward is thinking that somewhere in the near future, there will be a new middle, there literally will be a new structure to go in line with new leadership and new, a new group of kids. So it's exciting that Galena's gonna have their own Judy Center, the high school is purring along, so looking forward to '23, '24.
Great. Thank you, Trish. Just to piggyback on the, on the funding for the middle school, I mean, if there's anything that we need to do from a legislative standpoint or to come to Annapolis and speak, just let us know.
I will just add that the county commissioners agreed to give us a letter if that's what we need and be there to support, and so definitely we'll have everyone's support for that.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some experience now in Annapolis pretty well, so that'll be great to continue that and support. Last meeting, I had brought up the idea of a board retreat. I had some conversations with Molly Young from MAVE, and part of our membership to, to MAVE is that we are entitled to a, a MAVE retreat that they will run at no cost. So, so my, my, I wanted to bring to the board that MAVE will conduct that, that retreat for the board. I thought it would be beneficial to have you actually participate and not, not leave the retreats. I thought that would be okay for the board members. She did mention that their potential dates more, more forefront, really any Saturday in September, which would be, you know, Saturday mornings would be, would be her benefit or would be what she'd like to do. So we have either September 2nd, 9th, 16th, or 23rd. We don't necessarily need to decide now, but I'd like to have an idea. If the board would be so inclined, what would happen is, is that we would, I would inform Molly that we would want to go move forward with the retreat, and then she would want to reach out to each of the board members prior to the retreat date, and she would ask, you know, what would you like the goals of the retreat to be, as well as what insight do you have about the work of the board, both content and process, that might be helpful to achieve the goals of the retreat? So.
Is that something you see being here or would be the offsite?
I mean, we've had retreats here. We've had them offsite as well.
Right.
So, you know, whatever, whatever the board, pleasure of the board would be, but, you know, certainly I'd like to have that retreat. I mean, we typically align to strategic goals in that, in that space.
And that is open to the public.
Yes.
They can observe and not participate.
Correct. That's correct. So, so that's where, you know, certainly if, if the board would like to move in a direction, I could get some guidance that, you know, yes, this is a great idea, and then, you know, we can go from there.
Yeah, ninth is the Chestertown Jazz Festival, just the way.
And the second is right before Labor Day, so that's a three-week weekend. So I would suggest the 16th or the 23rd.
Okay. And I, and I don't have all the time, so anything like that yet, but if that's something that, you know, we typically do have it in the summer. I know this is a little bit later, but this would be managed by, by Molly, so, you know, she's the one that also spoke at the ASME Conference as well, so we're very familiar with her. Okay, thank you for that. The other piece, you know, as, as everyone mentioned, I mean, it is, summer is, is coming to a close pretty quickly. I hope that everyone in the room and the system enjoys their time. I know that everyone's gearing up for the start of school, and so that's just hectic, busy, and, and everyone's moving really fast. So I just wish you all a great end of summer, a great start of the school year. I'm excited to see some schedules coming out for some sport events, some other activities that are starting, so it's real nice to kind of get back into the groove and start to plan calendars and populate all of that stuff, so, so just wishing everyone the best of luck in that, in that, the rollout of this whole year. Okay? Thanks, everyone.
If I might just make a comment that was made with regard to the comment made by Mr. Rhodes about the lettering for the roof at Kent County High School, as I had, I put in an email, that is already in the works through our vendor, and it As I had, um, I put, I put in an email, that is already in the works through our vendor. And it will be done, and it was already in the process of getting done. And so that, um, I just wanted to make that clarification that the administration and also, um, the Kent County High School Principal, Chris Hemcenter, will be there to approve how we can forward with the lettering and basically replacing what was taken off the roof.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move into education services. Um, the first item up is the CECAC annual presentation. Um, Dr. Keen, I think there, if you'd like? Yeah, that would be. Thank you.
I feel fancy now. Um, good evening, president, guests, members of the board, Dr. House. I wanted to give a brief overview of our citizens advisory committee on special education, CECAC. Um, the special education CECAC meets monthly to review any concerns that parents may have, how to improve services here in Kent County, and to inform parents about their child's disability, services being offered here in Kent County, and, um, and how we can meet those children's needs. A lot of time, our parents, um, often do not understand their child's disability and how their child's disability impacts them in the classroom. So CECAC is a great way for parents to connect. Um, we appreciate all of the board members who attend our CECAC meetings. Mr. Getz, I think we've done it almost every meeting this year, so we do appreciate that. And the parents often will comment that they appreciate the fact that board members are there, um, listening to their concerns as well. Um, our last meeting, we presented a lot of data to our parents and actually had a lot of positive feedback about that. So just kind of going over some of the activities that we have provided. We started, we start the year off, um, every year with a big, with a larger meeting, um, with a topic that's really, you know, that's probing at parents and wants their attention. So, um, we have had a lot of requests to talk about attention deficit hyperactivity dysentery. Um, so we brought in Frank Frost, um, from, who has provided many different seminars across the state and nationwide, really talking about enhancing those strengths those children have in the classrooms and meeting their needs for learning and meeting their concerns that are present. Um, we also partnered with our family resource center so that we have to have a minimum of four meetings a month. We have a meeting every month. Rather than taking a month off when parents are not coming back because they're not sure when, we just keep it very consistent here in Kent County and offer a meeting every month. So we really talked a lot about in October, understanding IEPs with Parents Place of Maryland. They are going to come back again in October to present. Um, just a little bit different, but helping those parents understand that IEP and how they can participate in their child's IEP meeting. Again, um, November, we had Nanny come in and really talked about mental health issues and how they impact our child, our, our children's learning in the school. Um, one of my favorite meetings is our December meeting. It is our sensory, um, family holiday party where the children can come to stand in a controlled environment, participate in quiet songs, crafts, um, having a snack, different things that typically are overwhelming to children with disabilities. We had a huge turnout this year, um, one of the largest turnouts that we have had over the past couple of years. We also had a meeting on navigating the world of special education where our teachers were able to come in and talk about their roles on the IEP team and our providers, when to request, um, for providers to be in attendance at an IEP meeting and how their, um, their services impact the child educationally, not necessarily medically. Um, we also talked a lot about this year, dyslexia. Dyslexia, of course, is a specific learning disability that affects many children here in Kent County. Um, and we did have a presentation on strategies for dyslexia with Parents Place. And then, um, a great meeting that we had in our March, I'm sorry, was Understanding Autism. Mr. Lesnar, who presented from Pathfinders, is a dynamic speaker. He gets the crowd really involved, so our parents are really excited to see him come back for a second here. We also had our community resource fair. Our community resource fair had, I would probably say, thirty to fifty vendors this year. Um, up until the day that we were hosting it, we had editors calling up and asking if they could come share their information, which is great. What we have found over the years is that our, um, community members, even those in the community that are serving children and adults, do not necessarily know about other agencies. So they come and they meet with those agencies. Um, and we have partnered with many of those agencies to continue to enhance our services in Kent County for our children, not only in school, but as they transition from Kent County High School. And then in May, um, we had, we displayed all of our data, um, to our parents. Our parents had time to look at our data, walk through our data, talk about what's went well and things that we would change. Um, so we also had our special education awards where our teachers were honored. Um, and we also talked about Maryland legislation that has gone into effect that will impact how we do work next year. Um, so some things that we had noticed were that we had a lot of parents attending virtually because we cut the virtual option. Um, and every month, we would see different parents. We also saw parents who were not from Kent County come into our CECAC meetings because they were finding them valuable. Um, not just one time, but we had one parent from Annamaska County who came to every single one of our CECAC meetings because she said our topics were of interest to her and she was very involved. So, um, we definitely encourage that. We also saw an increase in attendance overall. Um, and of course, we wouldn't invite everybody, it was September 27th, at 5:30 to our opening CECAC meeting. Um, our presentation will be by Dr. Joanne Clay, um, strategies to support student behaviors, not only in school, but also in the home. Because we know parents, um, often request that information as well. So we're able to have her come present, she's a dynamic speaker, and we look forward to hosting that event.
Dr. Keen, just to add, I mean, you know, the, the years that I started, I think when I first came on the board, I started attending. And you're right, I mean, the attendance has really grown and it's the resources, it's what you're bringing to the, to the table. The virtual piece is huge. Um, you know, we see folks on there all the time, so it's really great. So, you know, to you and the team, everything that you guys are doing is just fantastic, so thank you.
And I'm going to say, I hear nothing but great things about the presentation. I just wanted to ask just a couple of questions. It's not exclusive to families with kids who already have IEP, it is open to anyone who would like to attend. And I know that you guys try to make it a very family-friendly space. And so there's always something for the kids to do.
We provide childcare, we provide pizza, um, so I think, you know, if a parent wants to show up, we're going to be able to help you.
It's such a great resource. Thank you so much.
I also want to mention that Dr. Keen made a presentation to citizens advisory commission that was, and it was very enlightening. It was at the request of one of our, uh, one of our members, and I think you answered all the questions. Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Keen, that was informationally correct.
Correct, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, no, that's great, thank you for that, and you are up again.
Absolutely. So, um, the second memo that I have is actually, um, this is not for information. The staffing plan, um, so this is after presenting this, we are asking for administration to recommend the board approval of the special education staffing plan, first full year 2020, very 2024. Um, so, the staffing plan really outlines how we're providing services here in Kent County to students with disabilities, um, to support, um, the members, um, the teachers, the inclusion assistants, the IEP, um, speech language pathologists, physical therapists, OTs. Um, and we have to present to the board each year a plan on how we will make sure that we are implementing those services. We also have to have input from our public, um, which we gather at our CECAC meeting. Um, we also talk to parents that are aware of them, um, and we send out multiple surveys throughout the year asking for that input. So, um, what we have to review in this plan is the provision of services in the, in the student's least restricted environment, that means we provide those services in an environment, um, that can meet their needs. It may not be necessarily the general education classroom. It may be a specific classroom to address, um, language development. It could be to address behavior concern. Um, we also need certain attention recruitment of high-quality, um, qualified employees. The academic achievement of all of our students, assisted technology and technology of our staff and our students. As you know, special education teachers are required, um, to complete a lot of the work studying for those resources and technology tools in order to do that. Um, and we also are responsible for compliance indicators through a Maryland state report card, which we review every May at our CECAC meeting as well. Another, um, thing that, um, we focus on is on the incentive effort, um, making sure that our funding is meeting the minimum necessary and required, um, to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. Um, we also look at the time needed for our special education teachers to co-plan with their general education teachers to conduct their IEP meetings, um, to manage their case load along with, um, managing their paperwork. So we also, when looking at this plan, we consider not just the number of children that our teachers are providing. Because we know students with disabilities are very individual and some students require extensive amount of support and time from a teacher, um, which is impacted into their caseloads. So while caseloads may not always be around across the board, as you said, you have fifteen children as our case manager, um, we look at how much time that teacher also has, is required to work with that child. So, um, our infant and toddler program, our infant and toddler program serves children birth through three. And there is an extended option for children to remain in the infant and toddler program through their fourth birthday or the first day of pre-teen, or when they enter school, I'm sorry. Um, as of August 20, 2023, I'm sorry, is this 2020?
We have a little on this one, 2023.
Okay, I'm going to just scroll down to that, what's in that question actually show. Um, we have, um, approximately anywhere from thirty-one children at a time, um, which is a little lower right now than what we will have because children are transitioning from the infant and toddler program into pre-K work. Um, the most that we've had last year at one time was forty-three children in the infant and toddler program. So, um, we have one service, dedicated service coordinator and special instructor, who supports that program as well. Um, and she, she is able to provide case management, coaching with parents, um, and also with, um, those special instruction services. Um, thirty-nine referrals were made to the infant and toddler program. Twenty-three children were evaluated last year, and nineteen children, in addition to the children we already had in the program, were bound eligible for infant and toddler. So it can be assumed that we're getting approximately one and a half, um, referrals a month. I know we don't really count children as half children, so we'll round it up to two, two new children a month. Infant and toddler is a little bit different because we do have a forty-five day timeline. Um, and there are certain requirements to implementing those services much faster because we have a baby's brain changing at a faster rate than older children. Child find referrals, there were fifty-eight child ride find referrals made in the school year of 2022 to 2023. So, um, while those did not all come from Kent County Public Schools, some of these did come from our private schools in the area. Um, children not in school because we start IEP services at the age of three. Um, and some of these were children who had moved in, um, who were here in therapeutic foster cares or foster care. Um, so, in the school setting, a few of them are not yet enrolled in school. Um, there were fifteen children, um, that were referred. Fourteen went through the evaluation process and thirteen of them were bound eligible. Um, which really shows that our teachers are doing a great job of looking at those needs of the children and determining who truly needs an evaluation. Thirty students from Kent County Public Schools were referred. This could be either from the school or from parents. Um, again, fifteen of those thirty were bound eligible for special education services. Just, um, just so that you know, that just because a parent refers their child for special education services does not mean that we necessarily always test. We may look at their pre-referral strategies and use our NT, our multi, multiple, multi-tiered systems of supports to support their children as well versus identifying them with a disability. Um, the supports are broken apart by school so that you can understand why Rock Hall Elementary School does only have two, while the other two elementary schools have three special educators. So that's to have children in inclusive environment. Um, again, um, the instruction, there's an instructional assistant at each elementary school. Um, and then Kent County Middle School has five teachers this year, the IEP chair and transition specialist, and one inclusion assistant. Um, so those are for children also that are being served in this inclusive environment. That was a decrease of one, um, teacher from last year, um, due to, um, changes in the supports needed at the middle school. Kent County High School, there are also five teachers. Um, we decreased one teacher and two instructional assistants from the previous year's staffing plan. Um, and currently, we have one open special education position due to our recommendation. Um, there's also one transition specialist and IEP chair at the high school. Um, and her, those roles really are organizing the meetings and making sure that those post-secondary goals are being met. We have, um, a behavior and emotional support classroom at our Barnett Elementary School, middle school, and high school, um, along with a language support classroom at Galena Elementary School. And we did add a language support classroom, um, at Rock Hall Elementary School this year. And that is a new position, um, due to the increased need of, of children that are involved. So, um, Rock Hall Elementary School classroom will primarily serve young children. And then, we, um, at the high school and middle school, we also have our life skills classroom still, um, and our eighteen to twenty-one-year-old path program at Chesapeake College. So, um, related services and supports, I'm not going to read all of that to you because I'm sure you have read all of that. Um, we are, um, we will have next year, um, one virtual school language, school, I'm sorry, school psychologist and speech language pathologist, um, due to the inability of us being able to find these case-based services in order to provide, um, those, um, necessary IEP requirements and eligibility, um, meetings. So, we will have some virtual, um, therapists. Um, well, we will look carefully at who they are working with because we would not care if a child who does not do virtual instruction well with a virtual. because we would not care if a child who does not do virtual instructional with a virtual speech language pathologist. We do rely a lot on the input from our case managers to help us determine who will and who will not benefit. We do have a speech language pathologist that also serves school-based along with infants and toddlers. So that also helps us. And we have a C O D A, which is a certified occupational therapy assistant. And we will be hiring a speech language pathology, pathologist assistant next school year to help out with each part. So the retirement issue, we didn't need the speech language pathologist. So we're starting to lose them, but I, I think we'll be able to provide all of the services. Do you contract with Maryland School for the Blind for additional services and orientation of disability services? So we do have somebody who comes once a week from Maryland School for the Blind to provide services for our children here.
Do we have any students with disability?
Yeah, we have, I believe, five students. Let me just double check.
We have five at one time for sure.
Four students right now.
Okay.
And five that receive, that receive services from our depth and part of parent teaching, teacher. And then one infant and toddlers who receives services from our depth and part of parent teaching, teacher. So one thing that has changed and has been impacted that we needed to focus on in our condition, in our plan this year from M S D E is teachers wanting conditional certifications who are not certified in special education yet. As you can see, we have five teachers. So I'm looking at Mr. Hudson just to make sure, five teachers who fall under this category. Those teachers this year will not be able to conduct any assessments or make determinations in eligibility meetings. While they may be certified teachers in other content areas until they have been endorsed in special education, they cannot make those decisions.
So who does do that?
So that will be with the other teachers who are certified. Our professional development plan is really focusing on inclusion. Horton Gillingham Instruction. And with behavior services for students who may, who may require those behavioral supports in their I D. We also work collaboratively with our provider team monthly to make sure that we are focusing on free technology. And monitoring all of our data. We are looking at disproportionality along with where our children are receiving their services. So the majority of our students, we have really improved the number of children that are receiving services inside the general education classroom with non-disability peers. The evidence-based practice of receiving those services in that environment actually has the highest return rate for how the child, is the success of the child at the high school. So we also know that not all children benefit from being in that general education classroom. So we do have other options as well to push. Our disproportionality data, so there is a little bit of information there because we have been focusing a lot on decreasing the over-identification of African-American students with specific learning disabilities. We have met the state target for reduction. So we did not fall into comprehensive coordinating early interviewing services for that category this year. However, we did fall into categories of students of identification of African-American students with disabilities. While we are seeing growth here in Kent County, because of our small numbers, one or two students has put us over the risk ratio. So the state says that your identification of African-American students should match your population.
Percentage percentage?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a formula that they use. So we are, the risk ratio, if we were two point oh or higher, you are found to be disproportionate. We are seeing at two point zero nine. So that, while we've made progress of decreasing that, we still are seeing over that, two point oh. Other health impairments, that is an area we are focusing on because we are over-identified in that category as well. We also are over-identified in placement of Hispanic children in self-contained settings and out-of-regency, which is they receive their services outside of the general education classroom during the day. So we have six children, so it's not something that we could simply say is one school. Because when we looked at the data, it was two, two, two. So while six children does not seem a lot based on the number of children of this night team that are enrolled in that school. In fact, that's true.
We could also have a classroom setting where there's.
Either in our life skills classroom, we hear support classroom, or either support classroom.
Something other than the support classroom.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we know that while we're over-identified with the presence of that placement, they were all considered justifiable over-identification. But we still work when decreasing that presentation. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, this, this is an action item. Administration is recommending board approval of the Special Education Staffing Plan for school year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Gee. Any further comments or questions?
I have just a question for the, the providers that are using telehealth essentially. Are you still actively looking for in-person providers?
Did we ever stop looking?
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. If there are no further questions or comments, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Inspector?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion's passed. Thank you, Dr. Kane. Appreciate it.
I need your signature on the plan, and I want to drop this off to you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Summer Academy's summary.
On Twitter.
Yeah.
Good evening, President-elect, Dr. Kowal, you're the president of the board. Tonight's summary is going to be exactly that. Rather than going through a PowerPoint presentation or a slideshow, I just wanted to share with you a few of the highlights from our summer program. So I provided a copy of a brochure that each of you may keep, and it will really point out the highlights from the various schools and the ways that our summer programs have impacted our students. Before I go through any of the information, I just want to give a public shout-out to the tremendous staff that worked this summer. We had teachers at every school, support staff members, counselors, social workers, technology support, and every school had an administrator that was present and totally engaged in the summer program. But all of this would not have been possible without the leadership at the district level. Jess Cloud, who was on maternity leave at this time, and Terry Hutchins, who's a contract person that works with us. Those two really took the lead in helping to see that everything that happened today was made possible. At the school level, this is now our fourth year in a row that we've been able to hire quality coordinators on each site. So I'd like to say their names out loud, just so you know who it is that was really doing the grunt work at the school level every day. Planning with the teachers, helping with the discipline of the schools, coordinating with the community for field trips weekly for our students. Actually, more than weekly. I think they went on six trips, and six trips in sixteen days. So they had a lot going on. At Garnett Elementary School, it was Courtney Whitby. Rock Hall was a shared position with Emmy Nickerson and Kim Mayne. Galena Elementary School, Rachel Hugaison. Kent County Middle School, Rivera Copeland. The Algebra One and C T E Boot Camp, Brett King. And Justin Jenkins was also one of the leaders through the high school as well. And my hats go off to them because they stayed in constant communication and really kept their finger on the pulse of the student needs at the school level. As you know, the intent of the summer program all along, whether it was through Twenty-First Century Funding or what we've been using right now through Elisa's Magic, our E S R funds that help keep this going. So we have now been able to offer these programs on every school site, which is something unique. Not all systems do that at no cost. But that takes cross-departmental support. And Mr. Wheeler, with the added responsibility of getting those bus routes ready in the summer, that's not a minor undertaking. So all students were able to attend. And in food services, they all received both breakfast and lunch every day. Again, just fabulous coordination and work. And then with our health, health department, we had nurses on-site at our programs as well. So again, I just want to give you the full picture of all the different pieces that are part of it. The programs themselves run in sort of a systematic approach. So what the coordinators do is they work with the instructional team to identify the most pressing academic needs for the summer. For example, you can't cover the whole Algebra One course. So Justin, his team, and by the way, the principals are very hands-on with this. This counselor can tell you. They identify the key standards that are going to be covered throughout the course of that summer camp. And then they administer both a pre and post-assessment. So at your leisure, when you want to look through the packet, you'll actually see some of the results of the program. And, you know, the pre and post-assessment results for the Algebra Boot Camp are in there as well. I don't want to forget about our little ones because we also had Judy Center running Cub Camp and Beth DeShepper, Brittany Farman, they partnership and led even at the earliest stages some incredible activities for helping our little ones as they transition into school for the very first time. And then also, there was a credit recovery portion where our students at the high school level that struggled, maybe that needed to go back, a shot in the arm, is got a second chance to recover some of those portions. You'll have the data in your pocket as well for credit recovery. So I hope you'll take the time to go through and enjoy the beautiful brochure that our coordinators put together for you. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer this for you.
Any questions for Ms. Jack Watson? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would add that with the elimination of E S R money at the end of this year, we will not be able to offer it and follow these things next year, so.
I was just gonna thank you for mentioning that. We did apply, so we have a team that did write for another Twenty-First Century Grant. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we will be successful because that will allow us to continue, but it will be a back to the one site for elementary. We will be able to have it at every school.
Thank you. Okay, that was for information purposes only. Thank you for that. The next section is administrative services. We are at the expenditures and revenue report. Ms. Stewart?
All right. Hello.
Good evening, Dr. Kowal, President-elect, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're gonna go over the expenditure revenue report for July of twenty twenty-three. So as you know, who are aware, we are now in the start of another school year, the school year twenty twenty-four. What you would note here, we have the, we have Fund One, which is our restricted and unrestricted funding. We received about three point nine million for the month. Nothing for our Fund Three school construction, just to, well, I'll speak on that later. Then in our Fund Five for free service, about forty-four point three thousand that we received. And then Fund Seven, nothing at this time, to give us a total of cash receipts of four million, forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the month of July. We then go to our next, there we go. Our current expense fund, as of July thirty-first, we've expended about nineteen percent of our funding. Majority goes in commerces, for incomers for salaries, which you would see also what we have expended to this point. And then our school construction, nothing at this point. To note, this year, we did not have any, for fiscal year twenty-four, any school construction project. What you would see is tying up pretty much the loose ends of what those current projects are out pending that we still have to do, for example, you know, like the roof. Then we go to our food service fund. We've expended about ten percent of our funding for there. Then we have our restricted fund. And our restricted fund is about twenty-eight percent, which you would notice. We are still in the, we are undergoing our audit right now. And so with our restricted funds, we do not tend to roll over until about September when we have finalized the audit and did all of our review for our expenditures. So what you see now pretty much is, are the new grants that we have received and uploaded for fiscal year twenty-four. But hopefully by the October, the expenditure revenue report by October, you would see those expenses involved. And then the funding overview for, so this is our receipt compared to our expenditures as of July thirty-first. This is just for information only. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Stewart? Not hearing. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four targeted school instruction grant. Inspector?
Good evening, Dr. Kowal, President-elect, members of the board.
Good evening.
The purpose of this is to receive board approval for the school year twenty twenty-four targeted school instruction grant. The targeted school instruction grant is a restricted grant that has been provided through M S D E in the amount of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. This grant is to provide the schools that have been identified through our accountability system as having at least one student group performing as low as the lowest, I mean, five percent of Title One schools. The schools that are receiving this grant are Kent County Middle School and Galena Elementary School. Funding from this grant will be used to purchase supplemental instruction materials. And that will allow students at these schools to receive additional academic support with the help of tutors and small group instruction. This is an action item, and administration requires board approval for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four targeted school instruction grant.
I have a question about, have the specific targeted student groups been identified at this point? And what, what student groups are they?
They are students in special education, English, language, Spanish.
And that's at both schools, Galena and at the middle school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, the administration is requesting board approval for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four targeted school instruction grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions?
Could you repeat the first one? It's for special education students, which are targeted.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Not hearing any more questions. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the restricted grant fiscal year two thousand twenty-four targeted school instruction supplemental grant.
The purpose of this memo is to receive board approval. The purpose of this memo is to receive board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Targeted School Instruction Supplemental Grant. This is the same grant as previously discussed. However, it's in the amount of $9,456. It is only good through September 30th, 2023. It's for Kent County Middle and Galena Elementary as well. And administration requests board approval for fiscal year 2024 Targeted School Instruction Supplemental Grant.
Great. The miss?
The same.
The same targeted student group?
Yes.
Okay, the administration is requesting board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Targeted School Instruction Supplemental Grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have the motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McGee has the second. Any further comments or questions?
I'll make one.
We may have the same one, so go ahead.
I just wanted to know why they don't include the children of color, black kids? Because I hear that, you know, we don't have as much for us now because all of a sudden, I guess we could liberate.
It was based off of Maryland Accountability System used through the 2021-2022 Maryland Report Card. And based on the testing scores of that report card, definitely, I didn't know that it was targeted at students.
Although, I looked at the testing scores of the African-Americans before, or children of color. And I saw their scores being lower, or lower than children with disabilities, which really said, yeah, how long do they have to be?
Well, this is, this is for the, it's based on that year's data for report cards. So we may very well qualify as we go further up, you know, looking at the other report cards. But that's all that's targeted for this, for this particular grant. So we do receive monies based on the report cards. And if you're, if you just keep in mind that the report card just became updated and reenacted, if you will, just in the 2021-2022.
I mean, I understand that that's just within, you know, targeted groups. But I would hope that they have something for other groups that are really down. I sense, I don't know, maybe they learn differently or something. But in order for us to figure that out, we may need a little grant money so that we can explore that avenue, explore that avenue or, you know, try to figure out different ways of doing things because everybody deserves more education.
I was saying that when they were looking at the report cards for this, it was that they were still dealing with some of the virtual money because of the pandemic. So that might have made the numbers a little different. Because of the cultural, that could have a potential, I don't know.
Right.
It could, but a lot of that should have been valued further than that. I wouldn't be sure. I would just like to say, them, for them to be able to have the opportunity to see everyone else has. And I just, nothing to anyone here, I'm just saying, we just have to, everybody should definitely have that opportunity, especially since most of the children of color had early start generation.
Says here, at least one student group performing as low as the lowest performing five percent of Title I schools. So that's the data that was used to determine who qualifies.
I've got a couple of questions. Why couldn't these have been one of the ones? Since it's the same target?
I think so too. The four provided to us were based on the MSDE, based on the seventy percent that we're holding from our Title I funding. So I think it might just be that one is ending in 2024, the other one is extending to September 30th, 2024.
The other question I have is, I would assume, I would assume it's a bad thing, that Hispanic students are English language learners. Is there anybody, I'm just, it surprised me that there's a specific ethnic group as well as English language learners. What additionally makes a kid Hispanic that qualifies this, other than the fact that English is not their first language?
Right. That's exactly correct. You can have students that are Hispanic that are not considered ELL students. That English is not their first language.
Okay, but there's something else about them being Hispanic that makes them qualify for this?
Well, they're still considered a minority, so they qualify in a different category.
Okay, I got you.
It's just like, they could, you could have Hispanic students that are farm students, so they're captured in different, different subjects.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I believe, Gail, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, if there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item is the Restricted Grant Fiscal Year 2024 Judy Center Expansion Grant. Gales?
Dr. Couch, President Gads, members of the board. The purpose of this memo is to receive board approval for fiscal year 2024 Judy Center Expansion Grant for Galena Elementary School. This year, Galena receives the Judy Center Expansion Grant through MSDE as well as through the Division of Early Childhood in the amount of $330,000 per year. This is a three-year grant. The purpose of the grant is to provide funding for all of the school systems to establish a Judy Center. The funds are designed to service children from birth through age five and their families by providing comprehensive early care and education services to promote continuous improvement towards school readiness. The Judy Center at Galena Elementary School will serve all children and families living within the catchment area for that school. The grant starts July 1st, 2023, ends on June 30th, 2024. The additional two years of funding will be accrued after MSDE conducts a review of progress during the first year. This is an action item and administration requests board approval for fiscal year 2024 Judy Center Expansion Grant for Galena Elementary. I will note on here that there are only three schools within the state of Maryland, or three local education agencies that receive funding and use Galena as one of them.
No other two, do you know?
Or at least no, you don't have no other county that were?
No.
I haven't.
But we did apply, we did, Gales applied for this grant as did Rock Hall. So we knew we probably wouldn't get both, but, because there were only three that were going to be awarded. So we were just lucky we got one.
It's pretty amazing to think that we only have three elementary schools, two of them have Judy Centers.
I know.
It's amazing and also indicative of the challenges we have.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. The catchment area, does that cover all the kids that are enrolled at the school? Or is it geographic? So it includes Millington and all the other?
Geographic, whatever those include on, and then go up through Cooper's Lane and Wharton.
Yep, which all of those kids are technically.
Right. And then the 330,000, did they specify how many students that's supposed to cover?
It just covers all the kids that live in that encatchment area.
And do we know, do we anticipate or estimate how many kids will be utilizing the Judy Center at this point?
No, I mean, they'll be in the process of identifying those students. And so it'll be like at Garnett, it could change from year to year. So now they'll just do their outreach and child finding and see which kids that can be involved.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, the 330,000 dollars set an outreach in the years, no matter how the numbers may change in terms of students that we provide services to?
At this time, yes. I mean, we'll have to reapply and we'll have to show our data at the end of the year. So it's possible that those, the grant amount could change. But, you know, we'll count on at least that amount.
And right now, they have, I don't know, 330,000.
That's why they're going to come in after the first year they're going to, is that right?
Right now, they have awarded 939,000 for the three.
I got you. Okay.
Okay, this is an action item. The administration is requesting board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Judy Center Expansion Grant for Galena Elementary School. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Dorsey has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Restricted Grant Fiscal Year 2024 Stronger Connections Grant, SCG.
The purpose of this memo is to receive board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Stronger Connections Grant. The fiscal year 2024 Stronger Connections Grant is a restricted grant authorized by MSDE through funds authorized by the Bipartisan Safety Community Act of 2022. The award amount for this grant is 1.32 million dollars. The purpose of this grant is to provide funding so the LEA can provide all students with safe, inclusive, and supportive learning environment, increase the student's sense of belonging with culturally and linguistically responsive practices, build connections that will make students less likely to bring weapons to school, and support students with overcoming challenging and traumatic experiences through nurturing learning environments that provide a sense of emotional and physical safety. Kent County Public Schools will use these funds to hire an additional social worker at Kent County High School and Kent County Middle School. Kent County Middle School will also be able to hire a youth interventionist. This is a three-year grant program that start, that started September 15th, 2022, and ends on September 30th, 2025. Due to the late, due to MSDE getting the funding out later to the LEAs, this grant is eligible for a tidings waiver, which will allow the grant to be extended for an additional year through September 30th, 2024. This is an action item and administration requests board approval for fiscal year 2024 Stronger Connections Grant.
Sorry, Joe.
Go ahead.
So it says, an additional social worker for the high school and for the middle schools. So that would bring the number of social workers up to two at each of those schools?
Two at Kent County High School and one at Kent County Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
So the grant started last September. Did, did we, were we able to implement it then, or are we?
MSDE did not, we may send out the application until April of this year. So apply for the funding.
So why do they say it started last September then?
That's the way the grant was written.
Okay. But we should, or we'll get it.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Okay, are there any additional questions? If not, we'll go ahead. The, this is an action item. The administration is requesting board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Stronger Connections Grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
Don't make a motion.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda, the Restricted Grant Fiscal Year 2024 Collaborative Grant. It's okay.
And more grants.
The purpose of this memo is to receive board approval for fiscal year 2024 Teacher Collaborative Grant. Dr. Couch already gave a wonderful summary of this grant earlier tonight. But the Teacher Collaborative Grant is a restricted grant awarded by MSDE in the amount of $1,449,000. This grant is to improve teacher education, prepare teachers for higher teaching standards, and integrate teacher induction, professional development, and advancement to meet the goals of the blueprint for Maryland's future. The Teacher Collaborative Grant project is a partnership between Kent County Public Schools, Louis State University, and the Kent County Teachers Association. This project advances a professional development plan for existing teachers, a 180-day 21st Century practicum, and will enhance induction and mentoring in Kent County Public Schools. This grant program will increase the supply of high-quality teachers in Kent County Public Schools and will result in the implementation of a career ladder for teachers that provides a track for National Board Certified Teachers to provide mentoring for new teachers. This is a three-year grant that starts May 1st, 2023, and ends on April 30th, 2024. This is an action item and administration requests board approval for the fiscal year 2024 Teacher Collaborative Grant.
As stated, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't make that motion.
Ms. McGee has the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Appreciate it.
Just asking a general question. Does anybody ever say, no, we don't want that grant money? I mean, it seems kind of ridiculous that we have to agree to accept money that somebody wants to give us. I know it becomes problematic because we get used to having it, and then we got to figure out a way to keep it in our budget, but still.
Well, we, it's required for us to amend our budget to include these grants into our budget, so that's what requires board approval. But I think we have turned down some grants at some point, but so far, we have not.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Galena Elementary School Shore Rivers Grant Funding. And I see Ms. Stewart walking to the podium.
So tonight, the purpose of this request is that administration is seeking approval to accept the Shore Rivers grant funding through the Robert S. Shuman Foundation funding specifically for Galena Elementary School to construct a rain garden and bird habitat. So Shore Rivers has set aside $15,000 to construct the Galena Elementary School rain garden and bird habitat. Shore Rivers is planning to do all of the construction, handling the project from start to finish. And they're also, once the project is completed, going to engage the students to plant native, botanical, and ornamental grasses of plant vegetation in the project. So they will also provide like the long-term maintenance and what you need to assist to maintain the garden habitat. So administration is requesting this approval from Shore Rivers Grant Fund in the amount of $15,000.
Okay, as Ms. Stewart just mentioned, this is an action item. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
There you go.
Mr. Rhodes has the motion to?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I just want to say, I think that this is wonderful. And I have absolutely no doubt that Ford is not watching this tonight. But I want to say thank you to Ford Shuman for this. It's wonderful.
Great. Without any additional comments or questions, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Procedure 204, Staff Hiring. Mr. Hushin?
Thank you, President Gads, Dr. Couch, school board members. This is just to provide you with a high-level overview just to update our staff hiring, to reflect the onboarding process, which is the final stage before a new employee begins working for us as a school system. So people just see at the end that the additions to the procedure are highlighted and ready.
Thank you, Mr. Hushin. That is information only. You will be back next month and?
No.
No?
Procedures just are information.
Great, thank you. Next item, Procedure 300-25, Workplace Bullying.
Yes, this is a small update as well, just to make the process of appeals for the filing of a workplace bullying or harassment complaint consistent with the procedure that we have, which is entitled Appeals to the Superintendent, 100-25. You will see in this procedure, I just referenced that procedure that exists and just outlines the exact language so that there is consistency in the process.
Are there any questions?
So that's basically what the changes were like, being this.
Yes, the prior appeals language wasn't very clear.
Okay, that was also for information only. Thank you, Mr. Hushin.
You've got a president good.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the Board Handbook Revisions.
Okay, this is the second time around, bringing back this policy for consideration. I did add, at 5:30, actually, thought that Ms. Sullivan had.
I did add, at 5:30 actually, thought that Ms. Sullivan had sent an email at 4:30 recommending some changes, and they're pretty extensive. So my advice would be to share that document with the board members, have you review that, and then communicate with me whether you want me to include that in the revision. I mean, it's probably, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight pages.
Is it eight? I'm sorry.
Seven pages, seven or eight pages. So I think it probably would be, there's six pages, excuse me. So I think that instead of going through, and a lot of them are multiple references of changes. So it's up to you, President Getz, how you'd like to. Initially, I said we would go over it, but then I saw how lengthy it was. And I thought, well, you know, perhaps it would be much better for you all to have an opportunity to digest it, take a look at it, and then if you'd like, correspond directly with me, and then I can, or just add it in the appropriate section.
So I did email everyone on the board and Matt a copy of the document, but I also have a hard copy, so it's easier for people to work on those.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess the question for the board members, would you, would you like to?
Go over it now?
Go over it now, or go over it at your leisure, and then come back with any recommendations you have in the sense of sending them to Dr. Couch? And then, you know, that could be put into one document to be reviewed?
And certainly, these are just suggestions of things that I came across in reviewing and comparing our handbook to some other Maryland Board of Ed handbooks. So just some things. And there's also something in there that I think would be beneficial for our retreat. One of the items was, Power County had a list of.
Expectations?
Yes, thank you, of expectations that the board members developed themselves. So expectations of board members by board members that they did in a retreat and then all agreed on. I thought that would be exercise for us, but also something good to include in the handbook. But I think at your leisure, we can, you know, other people's suggestions.
And then the other suggestion would be, since this is your bible, if you will, we could certainly save this for the retreat and spend some time really dissecting it at that time, instead of trying to use it during the business meeting. So I'm open to what you would like to do, but I'm thinking that we don't really want to spend the time now without having a chance to do what prior to.
Yeah, I read through the, before you handed this out, I read, I liked everything that's in there. So this is like adding, I mean, this is a lot, can we just approve what we have and add this, and go over this later? Or, I mean, it's so much here, and you brought it up at the last minute. You know, we had a whole couple of months to, or month to do this. I mean, I'm sure there's good stuff, and this is a lot, a lot of stuff to go over. I just think the way, a lot of good changes have been made in our handbook, I like it as it is right now. That's my opinion. So I think maybe we can be nice with the go ahead on it and add this later.
You can certainly make a motion, that's, if you'd like to make a motion, then someone wants a second, then that's.
I would agree with Mr. Rhodes that tonight's not the time to go into this. This is quite a lot to try to choose a lot. Yeah, yeah. And I don't know if any of this, because we're all just getting it, trumps any of the changes.
And I don't either, these were just things that stuck out to me, that I thought were suggestions, and I wanted to bring them forward. I mean, if we want to do it in a retreat, I think that would be great, but whatever the board wants to do.
We have two options.
We have two options, we can either vote on the recommended changes that I have now, and then bring it back and review, or stall it and then review it and do it all at once. So we've got two options.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion and we vote on it, I mean, I like it, I like what you've done, Dr. Couch, I like the whole thing.
We have a motion, do we need a second?
So Mr. Rhodes's motion is the one that's?
Yes.
Ordinate, okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
So I have recommended changes in the board documents. The recommended changes, that this will be the second time you review them. His motion is to adopt and approve what I have submitted to you, that this would be the second month of review. And you can always bring back, there is no date that we can or cannot bring the board handbook back. So if you want to consider any more changes, you know, we could do it at a retreat, or we can just table the whole thing and just wait till the retreat. So his motion is to accept what I've already submitted as changes.
Looking for a second.
Otherwise, the current board handbook stays as it is, and it's got some updates that need to happen that will have been, that you would know.
I can second Mr. Rhodes's motion if there can be sort of a, maybe a separate, once that motion's voted on, to say that we would consider these as well at a subsequent time?
That's good.
I would, yeah, I would say take one motion.
That's what I mean, so I'll second Mr. Rhodes's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Rhodes, we have a second by Ms. McGee, any comments or questions? I just have a comment, the very first page on the bottom, it references Boy Scouts, another designated youth group, should that, that be in there?
Actually, the sample non-discrimination statement in the U.S. Department of Education, that does have to be in there.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I appreciate it, I was just curious, those of you guys saw Boy Scouts, I was like, oh, that's.
That's why.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, are there any additional questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm sorry? Okay.
Aye.
Motion passes with ayes, thank you very much. I would entertain a second motion.
I'd like to make a subsequent motion that I don't know if we want to say it for the retreat or just say subsequently, I mean, I need some input to when we want to. I think it's important to look at these, I just don't know what the timeframe should be. Should we do it at the retreat, should we do it next month? Next month and the retreat could happen in the same one, so.
Yeah.
But I think it's important that we give this thought, yeah.
Yeah, I would just add that it's also important that if anyone else has any input, to also pull it in.
Let's do it one time.
Yeah, let's do it one time, and let's have the conversation. I mean, if I had, if I had a little bit of input on it, I would love to do it at the retreat. I mean, we certainly have our strategic goals, and we have to, we have to outline. But I think the, that board handbook sits in a place that could, there could be a lot of conversation wrapped around it. And here, I just think it's kind of a weird.
Seems like it would, it seems like it would fit with what you were saying that Molly wanted to do.
Yeah, so.
I'll make that, the motion that we consider this and any other input that board members would like to have to the handbook at our retreat, which is probably going to be in sometime.
Date to be determined.
Got you, okay.
Okay, we have the motion by Ms. McGee, we have a second by Mr. Rhodes, any further comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
If I'm able to vote on the handbook, does that mean I'll want to participate in the retreat?
The way the handbook is written now, you can attend the retreat through invitation from the board. So the board will have to make that determination, which I don't see why. Wouldn't invite you, but I mean, it has to be.
Are you telling us you'd like to come?
Would you like to come?
Got it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did we take a vote on that?
No.
No, we have the motion, we have the second, we have comments, questions?
And the second was by Mr. Rhodes.
We'd like to go for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes, thank you. Okay, how do participation, Ms. Gail? Okay, the next item on the agenda is notification of our next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be held on Monday, September 11th, 2023, beginning at 5:30 PM. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. Both meetings will be located at the Administrative Building in Abroom, 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. She already?
The CACB, the CACB meeting is October 16th, in this very room.
Okay, and the last item on the agenda is to adjourn. The administration is recommending approval to adjourn the meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion, Ms. McGee has a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, call for the vote, all is in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?